Welcome to the Wednesday, July 26, 2023, regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you do my hand read the public comments? The first item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment. For public comment, citizens of the district will be allowed up to three minutes to make their statement. Citizens will speak in the order in which they sign up. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee, is an opportunity for a citizen to express an opinion on a topic within the school committee's authority. The authority of the school committee primarily concerns the Stoughton Public School budget, the performance of the superintendent, and the educational goals and policies of the district's public schools. Due to privacy issues, confidential information about a student, personnel, and medical information are prohibited. We do have someone signed up for a public comment. If Connie Davis could come up. Which microphone are we using?
The one that's...
Okay, the one here.
I don't even need a microphone.
It needs it for TV.
For TV, so except for yours.
Please sit down, yes.
Sit down, okay. So if you could state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Connie Davis. My address is 1500 West Street, that is in Stoughton here. I... What else do you need me to do?
Your...
Okay. So my little girl, she's been part of the school system since she... forever, since she was born. I actually graduated from 1988, Stoughton Public Schools. My father graduated as well. Stoughton Public Schools, I'm a McNamara. She is looking... She chose to go to Southeastern Regional, and that is, you know, a personal decision due to the fact that they have dual enrollment, and Stoughton does not offer dual enrollment. But she is very... She's been in the marching band, she wants to be in the marching band, and she's looking, because she's still in the school system, that maybe you guys would offer, we're not looking to go free, just a way that she'd be able to participate in the marching band due to the fact that the marching band is low on people that are in it. You have reached out to the OMS, so you have the 7th and the 8th graders in the marching band to get, drive membership, and she's looking to be able to participate in something that is in her town.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. If we could move on to the next item, if there's no one else for public comment, is our superintendent update, and for the first time, Dr. Vayeta.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the committee and the general public, my colleagues, good evening. Sorry. Oh, yeah. I'm gonna get used to that. Thank you all very much, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Wanted to provide you with a couple of general updates. First of all, I know that it's been a couple of issues that we want to continue to improve on, which, one is our district webpage, of which Mr. Pickett is here tonight. In Communications, I've authorized to begin that process of doing some updating to our page in terms of materials that I think should be up there, and also updates from prior years that need to be taken down and added, some new information. The second one is one that's, I know, dated, all of you, and that is, I've met with Mr. Ireland, our new athletic director, and we'll be meeting with OMS and SHS principals on the transfer of making sure that we have an athletic program starting as soon as possible at OMS. This is gonna take a few months, as you know, but we are hoping to have something in place already for the fall, including reaching out to a local middle school league, we're in the process of doing that, and I'll keep you updated. I've been updated on the school building project, as of this morning as well, and look forward to bringing my experience of working on four different projects over the years to Stoughton, but also really learning about what's taking place within the project. I'll be asking Kathy to reach out to all of you about setting up once-in-one meetings for the month of August prior to September to get to know you, and also some goals that you would like to see from me as the superintendent in the district. Congratulations to my colleagues that are here tonight, Jeff and Joyce, and here Matt, on a job fair that we're putting together for the 15th of August from 9:00 to 1:00 here at the Jones Schools for Paraprofessional School Security, substitutes custodians, and we've added food services. I don't know how often we've done these, but we're hoping that these are, this will be a way for us to get some folks interested in working for Stoughton Public Schools. And lastly, I have received the resignation of Ryan McGee, our director or administrator in technology. I will be putting a plan with the central office team about next steps with that. I'm a little concerned about posting the job in July into August. We may be looking at an interim situation, and so I'm gonna put my feelers out there, talk to our folks internally as well, and take a look, and then I'll communicate with the committee on decisions that we're making on that, and then reserve the right that if we do do an interim, we'll post in the springtime for July 1st date next year. This is probably the hardest time of the year to find administrators to move because they've made commitments to their districts, but I feel pretty good that we can try to maintain some status quo, backfill the positions, and as soon as I make those decisions, I'll let you know and move forward in that direction. That's my general update so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, or comments for Dr. Vayeta? I don't recognize Mr. Colantonio here as Assistant Superintendent for the first time, so good to have you onboard.
Thanks for having me.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Stoyak use of facilities fee waiver request. Mr. Delinsky.
George Delinsky, representing the Stoyak basketball program, and come before you looking for the annual waiver of user fees for the basketball program.
Any... Oh, do I have a motion to approve the waiver of facilities, the facilities use fee for the Stoyak basketball program?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. Do you have any questions for Mr. Delinsky?
Am I making Mr. Man's fee?
Excuse me?
The amounts, were they?
The user fee, depending on which school, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the high school and middle school gyms are $60.50 an hour, and the Gibbons and Daw schools, if we use either, well, we use the one usually, we used to use two, that's, I believe, $33 an hour. And we've been doing that for years. We used to use the South School also, but numbers have gone down from 1,200, where it used to be considerably.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments or debate, discussion or debate? All right.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
There is a sign... One of the things that's very important to all of us, whether it's Stoyak basketball or any of the other programs, the new school policy about putting signs on school property to inform the public, we go out with all our websites and advertising, whatever we can do. What I was looking for, if according to what the policy says, shall not permit any individual groups without authorization of SPS Administrator to place any sign or whatever, and what we'd like to do is at the entranceways to the various schools, put up a sign allowing people to know that we're registering online. And I had a discussion with Mr. Ford a couple of weeks ago, and I was a little confused, and I'm not 100% sure if it has to go before the school committee or approach every individual's principal of the schools to find out if we could put a sign letting people know we're doing an online registration. And I just wondered if this would be under your purview, that would give us permission to do that for a couple of weeks. You know, I know you don't want anybody just coming up and putting a sign up on the lawns or anything by the entrance of the schools without getting permission, so I just thought I'd bring that up and see if you can give me some insight.
Dr. Vayeta, do you have...
Yeah, so I think the, a couple of things here that you can decide.
Gotta get used to the mic on. I apologize. I think there's a couple of different routes to take. So the committee has a new policy on signage that has to do with a bunch of other things that took place the prior year. I don't think that stops the committee, based on your policy, from saying that a community organization that has a direct access to students in your district is something that you can say, "No, we're not going to do." It meets, I think, the goals of the school committee, which is you're allowing your facilities to be used by Stoughton residents and Stoughton-only residents, and you're through an organization that, to be quite honest, Mr. Delinsky, I was sitting in your seat the first time that Georgia and I talked about this way back, so it's an organization that I think requires the support. So I believe the policy as written allows you, the school committee, to basically state and decide that, yes, we will allow for this community organization to utilize our schools, and it's also allowing for two-week period, three-week period for the signs to be out. So you could have a start date and an end date, and Mr. Delinsky and his team would have to put it up by then and take it down by then.
Oh, absolutely.
So that would be my recommendation on an organization such as Stoyak and its history within the community.
Okay, so that's how historically it's been done.
Correct. I mean, it's been, until your signage protocol came in this past spring, you've had signs out in people's lawns, you've had them, and they're not politically motivated, they're not religiously motivated, they're not in any way, shape, or form motivated except to an organization that is actually using your schools for the benefits of the citizens, in this case, students, student athletes and community members. So I think the intent of the language allows for the committee to say, instead of each individual principal or the superintendent saying yes or no that the school committee takes this as a town-wide organization, and so I would recommend that you vote for it to be placed for a period starting on this date and ending on that date. George, I'm sure you can give us those dates.
I'll get it. If you tell me who to vote to, I'll get the dates.
Yeah, you can email me the dates, and I'm sure the committee has it that you've...
Sure.
Here's a three-week date starting on this date, and George will send it to me, and I'll send it to the committee that he met the recommendation and the motion of the school committee.
We have the motion to waive the fee. Can we do that first?
Sure.
All in favor of waiving the fee?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that motion passed three to nothing, and should we make another motion to...
So I move to allow the Stoughton Youth Athletic Club to post signs regarding online registration for a two-week period to be determined by Mr. Delinsky.
Two weeks and three.
Sorry.
Three weeks is fine.
Three, yeah, sorry.
And then Mr. Delinsky will inform the superintendent via email or call or whatever of the dates, start dates and end dates.
Absolutely.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We wish you a very successful season.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's the first test of that. The next item on the agenda is policy updates. We have on the agenda ACAB sexual harassment. Dr. Vayeta, since Mr. Ford isn't here...
And Mr. Ford isn't here today, but you're looking at a non-huge change here, except, as you know, you now have an Assistant Superintendent, so the grievance officer is now Mr. Colantonio, the Assistant Superintendent located at 31 Pierce Street in Stoughton, and this position is annually appointed as the Sexual Harassment Grievance Officer for the school system. Added to that, it defines the regulations both under, on the second page, I believe you have it, under Title VII, Section 703 Civil Rights Act of 64, as amended in 45, federal regulation 7467 issued by EEO Commission, the Education Amendments of 72, 20 U.S.C. 1681, and then the Board of Education 603 CMR 26, which is our local one. So it meets the requirements of the state and federal regulations for the purposes of school committee policy.
Thank you. I did review this in context with the, I've had this, as I said, with the original, or the one that's currently up there, and really, the only change is the new, appointing the new Assistant Superintendent as the grievance officer. With the fact that there's only this one change, there's no substantial change to this, are we comfortable suspending the rules and voting on this one to approve this? Again, the only change is swapping out the name of the grievance officer. Are you...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
Motion to suspend the rules and vote to approve the changes to policy ACAB sexual harassment?
Yes. All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now can I have a motion to approve the revised policy ACAB sexual harassment?
Policy to approve the revisions to policy ACAB sexual harassment?
Second.
All right. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion carried, three to nothing.
Madam Chair, just as information, next year, with Mr. C. being here, the fact of the matter is you'll get it as a vote as a line item, it no longer defers to the policy, it's just you're making that appointment.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Now, we had on the table from last time, policy IHBG Home Education and policy IHBG R1 Home Education Administrative Procedure. We could vote to take them off the table. I know that we haven't had any discussion of them at this time. Unfortunately, Mr. Ford was not able to attend, and we are missing a couple, are represented from the policy subcommittee. This would be simply discussed at this time, I think.
So you have a very timely, sensitive issue, as you know, this in terms of communication, because you have a notification about August 1st by home school parents. So you're up against some deadlines. You could always take it up again if you so choose, if you know that it's, as a policy, it was set aside at the last meeting, so you can continue to vote on it. I have reviewed it in terms of meeting the mandates. It's very specific, very detailed, as you both know. I don't know what the other, what any members' questions were from prior meetings, so I'll defer to the chair on that. But it is a timely, as you can see, from the utilization of the August 1st, in the first paragraph it notes, consequently, this occurred as parents' families, which are home education for the upcoming school year, so that their home education proposal will be on the August 1st. Now, of course, we can have some flexibility, but the fact is, we know that we have parents who really want to get this up in to us as well, a lot of the process to go. So I'll defer to the chair, but at this time, I believe that was the Ford, who unfortunately is ill, I just sent him home. So I would defer to the chair, but I do think that the general gist of the policy is in place.
Any thoughts? I know that one of the questions with Mr. Barbosa, who's our, on the policy subcommittee, is he didn't really have any objections to the changes, and the changes are more kind of tightening up the kind of requirements, making it clearer, sort of streamlining the process. I know Mr. Ford demonstrated that the form that they're filling out is going to be more streamlined, more, is going to be clearer. He did have some questions about language, but I don't know the exact wording that he was concerned with, and after speaking with Mr. Ford, he seemed to kind of back down on that, but he was not ready to vote on that at this point, but unfortunately, he's not able to join us tonight. But we weren't, didn't have a presentation on this last time, so, false.
I think, so if we were to wait until after August 1st to do this, I know that's sort of, what would be the procedure on the office side?
So what happens is, depending on the number of students who come forward and families, August 1st now gives you basically to the first day of school to cross-check, go back and forth immediately, ask for more information if there wasn't a specific enough information. I think what Jonathan, excuse me, Mr. Ford decided to do with this is, again, putting this against policies I've seen in the past, so my history, it's been very clear that you folks are preapproving three standardized assessments, it's now clear in here on what you're looking for. Any other steps or steps to approve by the superintendent doesn't need, so again, they do have options. You have the potential for parents to come before you as a school committee, if needed, including bringing their own counsel and/or witnesses to say that this is what they want to do. These are, that's very specific to other policies that I have not seen in the past. And then, lastly, it does have the legal references that we're supposed to be meeting. So if the form, and again, I didn't talk to Mr. Barbosa, but if the form was one of the issues, the form is not necessarily a policy, it's a procedure. So therefore, we could have further discussions about the form as it could be to give input, or the general public that the form is too tedious or that needs to be further mainstreamed, versus the policy was just establishes those protocols.
I think he had some questions about the policy language too, but again, it was more the tone of it, but it's, again, it's hard to read policy, and it's like, the tone is never gonna be friendly.
Yeah, and I think one of the things too that happens is, you have to remember that the home education federal regulation is very, very clear and very parent-choice perspective. It is, there's no doubt. Our job on our side is to really make sure that the minimum standards are being met and/or hopefully exceeded. That's really our role, and then by providing certain assessments, it does come across, as you said, you can read this and say, "Well, here we go, they're trying to tell me what to do, I decided to homeschool." I think in this particular case, what you have is very clear policy, and then the form itself may be something we have to make a little clearer. We would want to give our homeschool families as much opportunity to get this settled and done prior to the first day of school, because the argument has also been made that they should stay in school until they go homeschool. That's more of an issue even for the child educationally. So I think that's why Mr. Ford is really saying, "Let's get this done." We can revisit it again if it doesn't work between August 1st and September, or if members of the committee feel differently, but it is time-sensitive.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure.
I know one big change that Mr. Ford pointed out is that the, the meeting that, prior, I believe the meeting was more of a requirement earlier on, and now it's become, the meeting with homeschool families has been become more to resolve issues rather than to...
Right.
As part of the process, and I think that's one of the biggest changes.
Right. If the families are, my experience has been that the families are utilizing anything connected to the national organization, but the national organization has provided them the details of what needs to happen per minimum standard, right, of per the standard that's required by through the state and the federal government. So usually what happens is, a parent thinks this does meet that, we don't think so. So the meeting happens on the other side of which, okay, how do we, how do we come to this agreement? In some cases, school systems win that case, in some cases, it's the parents that do. As you know, litigation can happen with it even, but in most cases, it's the public school system is trying to make sure that we're doing our job, which is to meet the requirements of the law.
So I guess we have several options. We can vote to take them off the table and discuss and vote on them tonight. We can vote, we do possibly have an August meeting coming up, we could, then of course, that cuts down on the time limit at the time for the families. Waiting until September seems like that.
The one thing you could do is you could discuss, debate, and vote tonight, yea or nay, and still bring it up if we do have an August meeting, and I would just inform Mr. Ford that, hey, listen, it's been approved by three members, there were not two members there, it might change the vote, it might not, it might just lead to a change of paragraphs lingo that's not, doesn't even require a vote, it would just be more of a clearer language type of thing.
Okay. All right. Thoughts?
I'm comfortable, based on what Dr. Vayeta says, to vote tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
So do we need to vote to take it off the table and then vote to approve? Okay, all right. Is there a motion to take policy IHBG Home Education and policy IHBG R1 Home Education Administrative Procedure off of the table?
So moved.
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion has passed, three to zero, and now it gets you.
So I think I would like to see discussion at the next meeting, for sure, but that said, move to approve policy, or revisions to policy IHBG Home Education and policy IHBG R1 Home Education Administrative Procedure.
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the policy has passed. The motion has carried three to zero, so these have been approved, but we will revisit them at the next meeting and see with our absent members if they have any...
And I'll reach out to both members of his, I'll reach, I'll send it to both members via email.
Okay.
And just say to them, if they've got any feedback, just send it directly to me, not to the full committee, so that way there's no public debate.
Yep.
And if they say to me that there are some issues that are still a concern, I'll defer them to Jonathan, excuse me, to Mr. Ford, and if need, come back to the full committee for further deliberation.
Okay.
This is like a process call.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. That said, we're now onto more voting. The next item on the agenda is the new elementary school building project enrollment vote. Turn it over to our team.
We're having a little bit, the team is not able to join Google Meet, Google is not, so I'm, they were, we're hooking up Teams right now and logging in that way.
Okay.
So we hope to run both, because we do have one person on.
Yes, okay. Do we need multiple meters?
We're here to support them for a presentation anyway, if that's what...
That's true, yes.
Courtney's on, sorry.
Okay.
So we have Courtney on, and we are going to let you guys, is there anything that you're saying before, or is it just you?
Well, we can introduce this.
Whoops, there you go. I know you weren't prepared with a long presentation, so...
No, we appreciate your taking this up. Obviously, it's very important to the progress of the project. The, you know, there are certain educational components to the project and certain sort of, that are the purview of the school committee, and there are other aspects, most of the other aspects, that are purview of the building committee, but certainly, the enrollment of the school, whether it's 225 students or 515 students, is your purview, and so we're here just to help, you know, present the pros and cons, or if you still have questions in that regard, and to, you know, answer any questions you may have at this time, so that we can proceed with the submission of the preferred option to the state.
Thank you. I think, I know we talked a little bit this afternoon about how to word the motion, and to do this in two parts, one to vote on the enrollment and one to vote on the consolidation, so that we have that very clear going forward, that we have voted on both. I think I would like to put a motion on the table for the enrollment, and we can discuss that, and then we can put the motion on the table for the consolidation, specifically of the South and the Wilkins. Who would like to make the motion to, motion, the motion would be to support the new, formerly the South Elementary School MSBA project with either the 515 enrollment, which is the larger consolidated school, or the 225 enrollment. So do I have a motion to support the new South Elementary School MSBA project with the 515 enrollment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, second, the motion's been moved and seconded. Any motions to support the 225 enrollment? Do we want to put that on the table too? No? All right, so any questions for the, any last minute questions, not last minute, but questions for the design team about the larger enrollment before we get to discussion and debate?
Yeah, I just, this isn't a question so much, I just want to name, we got some feedback from a member of the community at the community forum last week around family engagement at a larger school and family engagement at a school that is a little further away from like, a neighborhood school may have been historically, so I just like, I thought that was thought-provoking at least. I do think it's a problem to solve for as opposed to a reason to not like, move forward with this enrollment plan, but to just want to like, name it and see, I know this is probably a question more for like, the principals or the other folks on the building committee, but like, would open it up if you do have anything to add there. It was just something that sort of stuck with me after the community forum.
It is a valid point that, you know, just sort of by geography, that fewer families will be within walking distance of a school when there are only four schools in town as opposed to five. That is true, but until actual district lines are drawn, it's hard to really quantify that as to what, but it can be quantified so that people can understand. It can be one of the criteria that's used actually in drawing district lines, if that's an important point, is to, what would be minimize the distance that students are from any building. Obviously, there are other criteria too about, you know, driving and safe streets and walking the school and things like... and things like that that would be considered too. I don't know of any studies or, you know, in this regard. One of the factors that I think that seems to be more important is for parents' engagement and families' engagement is when their child is in a school for a longer period of time, you know, K through 5, they tend to get more engaged as opposed to making more frequent changes, you know, if the grade configuration were different. That's certainly not changing here, that's not part of the proposal. So again, kind of an informal but response would be, I'm not aware of any, you know, significant drop off that might happen in regard to family engagement. And remember too, that the, as the education plan was written, that the new school is meant to be a community facility too. So it's not just for the families of students who go there, but you know, there will be better resources both in the school and in the grounds that the entire community will hopefully be more engaged with the new school.
Thank you for speaking to that. I know it's sort of like not necessarily like the area where you have the most experience, but I do really appreciate it. Like I said, I think it's something we can solve for. I think there's a lot of pieces to it, like you said. And I think too, like, it's reassuring to hear you mention the redistricting and like all of the software that we can use to make that decision. I think really factors in a lot of things. So just want to like emphasize that would be like a thoughtful process that we would engage in like closer to the date. So I think, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there are not any more questions, move on to discussion and debate. I do have a letter from Armando Barbosa, who was not able to attend tonight. He was hoping to be online, but his time difference is a factor. So I would like to read that at some point, but if you have any thoughts that you want to communicate, feel free.
I think, I'll just say, I, you know, I thought, I thought a lot about this because I do live within walking distance of the Wilkins school. So like that, you know, I see my neighbors walking their kids to school and it's like, oh, maybe that would be nice one day. But it's like, so you know, that's like, it's a personal factor for me too. I think, but that said, I think we have the economy of scale things where we're only building one gym and auditorium here and all of the other things that go with one building. I think this is an opportunity to really provide as many of our students as possible with access to a brand new state of the art building. I think that there's, there's a lot of pieces here. So I do just want to say like, this is something I've thought really hard about. I've really appreciated everything that the committee has brought forward, just with like pros and cons and evaluations. So just thank you for all of that. And I think, yeah, I think the lower enrollment is certainly like beneficial to a smaller group of folks who live close to the Wilkins Elementary. But I think the larger enrollment has the, is like the longer term beneficial option to the town and also benefits more students in the town. So that's what I'll say.
Do you have anything to add, Farno? Okay. I, maybe I'll read the, Armando's is almost a vote. I just want to add that I really thought too, I know that one of the biggest obstacles to convincing the town to, for this larger option is the loss of the small neighborhood schools. And I do think that the design team has been very thoughtful about that. When Mr. Dorr described the South School as the small school in the woods, I think we took a lot of that to heart in looking at the building project and the architecture of that building. And full disclosure, I have a master's in art history, so I do, I have spent way more time than most people thinking about how buildings shape experiences and how they influence how we use a building and the feel of it. And I do think that this, the building that has been chosen, even at the larger scale, will build a sense of community. It fits in with the ed plan. The ed plan itself really focused on that, that sense of community, that neighborhood feel even in the larger scale. So I do recognize that it's going to be hard to say goodbye to the small neighborhood schools. But I think, again, long term, that this is the best solution for the town financially. There are so many benefits. We just take so many schools out of the rotation. If we look at this consolidation and we're not saddling a future generation with having to replace five elementary schools when they all come up. And again, the educationally, I was very sold on what our principals presented and how this larger school really allows more services to be available for more students. And I really think it is the best. I love the flexibility of having those extra five classrooms for population bubbles for that, you know, when teachers are trying to figure out if kid A doesn't get along with kid B and kid C and you try to, it's just so much easier when you have that additional space including the special ed programs in there. It just all makes more sense the way it is. So I want to read the letter from Mr. Barbosa, who wasn't able to vote, but this is his thoughts and he wanted to have them read to the committee and to the town. He says, Dear Madam Chairman in Stoughton, the decision for the school configuration was easy. Pick the one that best meets the current and future educational needs of our children. The pinwheel was chosen, easy. However, I have lost sleep thinking about which school enrollment and size is best for Stoughton. The priority in my mind is which option best serves the educational needs of our children, grandchildren and great grandchildren, the taxpayers and ultimately our community and country. It is easy to see and only think about how it used to be and how we want it to stay the same. Changes are traumatic ordeal, yet every day we survive change and with time accept it to be the new normal. Soon the same change we oppose is the one we will defend in the future. It is equally easy to forget the past and plow ahead into the unknown. This too can be a traumatic ordeal, and yet we adjust to it over time and change doesn't come fast enough or at all. I have heard and deeply considered the passionate calls to leave it the way it is from our community leaders and more importantly, those that trust us to make good, sound decisions for Stoughton. I have heard and considered the pleas to move forward boldly and strongly, leaving the past behind. Our community talks and we listen, consider, ask questions, obtain the best understanding of the concerns and interests. Our job is to make the best decision given the available facts for the future of our school system while taking your voice into account. The building committee, along with the consultants of Vertex, have done, and Eury, I'll add that, have done an outstanding job in presenting the facts. Our community has voiced its needs and desires. I particularly enjoyed their personal stories, which is a great value to making a good decision. Please understand that we have no choice but to move forward, which means replacing the South School and redistricting. The South School is over 50 years old and has become dysfunctional to the educational requirements of students and staff. We have no choice, it must be replaced. So what are we deciding? We must decide how to best manage these changes that will occur. We are years away from making redistricting decisions, but today we must decide what is best for Stoughton as far as the new school is concerned. The pros and cons of the 225 and 515 enrollment capacity is clear. I'm convinced that the 515 enrollment school is much better for Stoughton's taxpayers in the long run. The educational environment is also stronger in the 515 enrollment for the entire town. The 225 enrollment structure is adequate, but it does not provide the needs of our town efficiently. And we'll have to build two schools at a greater financial and time cost. As with these considerations and many others, Madam Chairman, that I make a motion to accept the 515 enrollment structure for our new school. Sincerely, Armando Barbosa, school committee member.
Madam Chair, can you just note that you're entering that into the record?
Yes, I'm entering this into the record. Do you need a copy of this, Nicole, or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sure. I can give that to you. All right, so those are Armando's thoughts. Any other questions, please? I want to note that we're making this vote, it looks like it's fairly quick. We haven't mentioned a presentation, but this is after months of discussion. I know that Chris and Armando came fairly late to this. They only started really getting all the nitty gritty details in April. But for us, we have been this, you know, working on this for months and certainly the building committee for longer and that. So this is not a rushed vote, but I do think we are ready to vote. All right, are you ready?
Yep.
All right, so we have the motion on the table to support the MSBA project with the 515 enrollment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried 3-0. The next motion would be to support the future consolidation of the South and the Richard R. Wilkins Elementary Schools, resulting in the total number of elementary schools in the district going from five to four when the new elementary school with the 515 enrollment opens. Do I have somebody ready to make that motion? All right. Lindsay, do you want a second?
Do you mind repeating it? I'm sorry. I was like writing notes. I just want to make sure.
A motion to support the future consolidation of the South and the Richard R. Wilkins Elementary Schools. So trying to specifically say that we're looking to consolidate those two schools rather than somebody coming in later and being like, we're going to consolidate with the Givens or something. So, so future consolidation of the South and Wilkins Elementary Schools resulting in the total number of elementary schools in the district going from five to four.
I have a question, sorry, I'm like just trying to wrap my head around it. So if we do that, so what we don't want to do is like, we're not putting the South and the Wilkins students at the new South School. And this motion isn't doing that. It's just like consolidating the enrollment and then redistricting.
It's consolidating the enrollment, correct. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, all right.
Okay, and the motion like does what we wanted to there?
Yes, so this was something that the design team suggested that we do in order to make clear that those are the two schools that are the focus of the enrollment vote.
Okay, I guess my question is, if we don't, if we frame it that way, is it clear that we're actually redistricting all of the schools? Or do we need to?
Do we need to put that in there?
That's what I'm wondering.
So Madam Chair, through you. So I think that the vote that you're taking today is to just make it clear that you are not considering closing or consolidating other schools except for the two schools that are under consideration. Your vote later on redistricting, that will take place at another time down the road. You don't want to have anyone come forward and say, a few months from now, well, it should have been this elementary school, not these two. So that's what you're trying to stop, to make very clear to both your working team, the community and MSBA specifically.
And that this consolidation will not happen until the new elementary school with the 515 enrollment opens. So this is not happening this school year, it's not happening the next year. It's happening once the new school is ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just like wanted to make sure it was clear.
Madam Chair, through you. I think to Lindsay's question, I think it's an important statement you just made because what will come of this will be the public's thinking that, you know, next year, I'm going somewhere else. We are years, with an S, from that real discussion and understanding of what it means to someone on the other side of town and so on and so forth. But I think it's important to state what you asked, that, you know, that's another section, that's another part of the debate, discussion and all of that that will take place, will be public and becomes, you know, something that folks want to know.
Thank you. I actually had a note to make that afterwards, but maybe I'll make it here. That the redistricting of the resulting four elementary schools will start after the MSBA and the town of Stone approves the project and the project cost, including the debt exclusion vote. And that time, the school committee and the district will work with the redistricting consultant to complete the redistricting map. That will happen at least 12 months before the start of the new school year in which the new district map will be implemented, meaning when the new building is open. So the redistricting won't happen for several years. Tonight, we're just voting on consolidating, the future consolidation of the South and the Wilkins to reduce the number of elementary schools in Stone from five to four when the new school opens.
Thank you. I think that's really, that's helpful clarifying.
It's good because if it's not clear to us, then it's not going to be clear to the public.
Yeah. Okay, so we need a second?
Yes.
Right, second.
A second.
Second Fabian's motion. Sorry.
It's okay. So the motion's been moved a second. Any more technical questions or debate or discussion about this? So again, this is just the second piece of the enrollment. We're just like saying we're consolidating the enrollment of these specific schools, the South and the Wilkins. All right, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried 3-0. All right, and is that it?
That's it.
All right, we made a really big decision. It's very anticlimactic, but thank you all again. Thank you all for the work on this. I know Ms. Courtney is not here, but thanks Courtney for being. Okay, thanks Courtney. I don't know why I'm waving computer. All right, thank you. All right, good night. The next item on the agenda is the appointment for the North River Collaborative. Dr. Veda, I know that I need to read the specific.
Yeah, so as you know, sorry. As you know by the law that it actually states, that started a few years back, when you appoint either myself or one of your members to the school committee, it has to, it's supposed to read exactly the way it's noted.
All right. So this is to, I'm going to read the appointment. So pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors at the North River Collaborative are to be appointed annually. Dr. Joseph Veda is appointed to serve as the Stone Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of the North River Collaborative in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012 for the 2023-2024 school year. All right, so do we need to make a motion to?
Yeah, so you can take that and you can move it.
Okay, so I move this. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Do I need to get this, Nicole?
It'll be part of the minutes. And the minutes will be sent to the actual North River Collaborative when they're, when they're ready.
Right, okay, I got one in two. I got to know, peek at some very official looking moles today for the school committee. So that's why I'm like, I need to do this right. So that's why I was trying to dial down the, be right with the other ones. All right, at this point, we are on to the second to last item on the agenda, the acceptance of minutes for June 27th, 2023 regular meeting. I would like to ask if there are any amendments or corrections for the minutes? Nothing?
Okay.
I have nothing either. Great job, Nicole. All right, a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from June 27th, 2023.
All right, and the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried 3-0. And now, our next regular meeting is currently scheduled for Tuesday, September 12th at 7:00 PM here in the conference room. We may have the August meeting. The next new elementary school building project committee meeting, for those who are following along with that, is Wednesday, August 9th at 7:00 PM, again, here in the conference room at the district offices. All right, there's nothing else. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All right.
Seconds.
All right. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried 3-0. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming and good night. Thank you.